Welcome to our Hamilton County Commission Meeting, September 28, 2023. We are going to start with the introduction of the dais.
Kristia Marshall, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer Odumis, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. I want to welcome everyone who is here. We always start our meeting with silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odumis.
Yes.
Awesome. We have some awesome presentations today in celebration of Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month, and we have some exciting folks to honor. But first, we have a proclamation honoring the month. So we're going to do that first. We have a proclamation in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month that reads, "Whereas each year the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America."
And whereas what began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. During National Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month, we recognize that Hispanic-Latino heritage is American heritage, as we promote this year's theme, "Driving Prosperity, Power, and Progress in America." And whereas the date, September 15th, is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Additionally, Mexico and Chile celebrated their Independence Days on September 16th and September 18th respectively.
And whereas, we recognize and honor the many ways the Hispanic and Latino community have enriched the fabric of our society, while also rededicating ourselves to address the lack of equal access to opportunity that many still face. And whereas, a Hispanic and Latino community continue their rich tradition of significant and diverse contributions in the cultural, educational, economic, and political vitality of Hamilton County.
Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners encourage all residents and county employees to celebrate our unique and vibrant history and recommit ourselves to a shared future of healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable communities for all. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio does proclaim, September 15th through October 15th, Hispanic Heritage Month in all of Hamilton County. Okay, we have a proclamation. Now we have individual proclamations, each of us, and for this month. And I would like to acknowledge the first honoree. It's a proclamation celebrating Angelita Moreno Jones' contributions to Hamilton County in honor of Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. Whereas, Angelita Moreno Jones is owner of Eastern Personnel, Inc., which is a full-service staffing firm specializing in recruiting and placing temporary contract and professional personnel, where Angelita Moreno Jones has done that for 36 years as a veteran of the ownership of Eastern Personnel. Whereas, under Angelita's dynamic leadership, she has strategically and successfully guided Eastern Personnel's growth by adding a background check division, a home healthcare division, a vending machine division, and a no-cost training division to assist individuals to better excel in their preferred job fields. And whereas, Angelita is dedicated to continually enhancing her skill set, being a graduate of Maccano, MC Canal, Mac Canal? Is that right? Macano, okay. Macano, Alabama. Okay. Macano A.L. Leadership Cincinnati and Tuck at Dartmouth College. Whereas, Angelita was very instrumental in the renovation of Union Baptist Cemetery and the United States American Cemetery, the oldest African-American cemetery in Ohio. Whereas, Angelita continues to contribute to her community by serving as a board member on the Better Business Bureau Board, the Port Authority Board, the Union Foundation Board, a chaplain for top ladies of distinction, the corresponding secretary for Advocates for Youth Education, and serves as the ambassador team for the Freedom Center. And whereas, Angelita has received numerous accolades throughout her career, including Woman Entrepreneur of the Year, YWCA Career Woman of Achievement, the Mayor's Hometown Hero Award, and being recognized as a 2023 Urban League Lion Honoree. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners recognizes and honors the many ways that Angelita Moreno Jones has enriched the fabric of our society in Hamilton County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio does hereby proclaim, September 28, 2023, as Angelita Moreno Jones Day in Hamilton County. And before you say something, I'm gonna open it up to Vice President Treehouse, and follow her will be Commissioner Odumis.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. Congratulations to you. Angelita and I met in a cemetery a few years ago. They were looking to do some renovations, and there's disrepair in the cemetery. It happens to be in Price Hill, where I lived for 25 years, a block away from the cemetery. And so, congratulations to you on your success with that project. I know some dollars came your way, both from the county and the federal government. You really started a trend, where the federal government in particular was looking at veterans who were buried from many, many years ago, even Civil War days, and saying, "We need to honor and dignify these veterans." So thank you for your efforts there. I know you also serve on the port, and we're grateful for your service there as well. Congratulations.
Commissioner Odumis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have great success in many, many areas. I can remember as it relates to your employment program that you have, I can tell, I've been telling people, you go there, and they will give you a chance, and they will work with you to make sure the ones that have not, for whatever reason, been able to find a job, that you'll be able to find one there. So I certainly appreciate that, and I think you're behind the vending machines out there.
I am.
Yeah, so I really love you for that. So, yeah, we got a variety of things, so certainly appreciate you, and you're just going on and on and on. So thank you so much for your success.
Thank you very much, all you commissioners. Thank you.
And I do want to add another piece of history. It says you're on the Port Authority, but you are the first African-American Latina woman to ever be appointed to the Greater Cincinnati Port Authority, and this board appointed you, and I wanted that to be highlighted as well as another groundbreaker in bringing your experience to that board, as well as the diversity. And I think it's worth mentioning during His Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you very much. It's great to be honored for a history that is not out front. You receive honors, but this is one I've never been honored for my Latino/Hispanic background. My grandfather was illegal, from Mexico, and, you know, my friends call me Angelita Moreno Jones, but my family knows as Angelita Moreno Jones, and I'm named after my aunt, Angelita Moreno Owens, who was named after her aunt, Angelita Moreno. So, and I'm sure it might go further, but that's as far as I know. But I'd like to thank you very much, because this is indeed an honor that was unexpected and most appreciated. So thank you very much.
We're gonna come around and take a photo. We're gonna come around and take a photo. All right, we'll turn it over to Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. Um, I am honored to be recognizing Apoyo Latino. And there are two individuals here from the organization. Maria Piambo, who happened to have served on the Commission on Women and Girls a number of years ago. And Legia Gomez is here as well. So ladies, would you step up to the podium while I read the proclamation? So again, in recognition of Apoyo Latino during National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. Whereas what began in 1968... Oh, we're gonna, this, I recognize this portion of my proclamation.
Right, that's why I skipped right down to the...
Hold on, I'm gonna pass through that one. Um, whereas the Greater Cincinnati Latino Coalition, later known as Apoyo Latino, was founded in 2005 when 19 organizations came together at the Cincinnati Hamilton County Community Action Agency to create a network providing critical services to the Hispanic Latino population. And whereas, Apoyo Latino's mission is to collaborate effectively as a network of agencies, professionals, advocates, and community leaders to improve access to culturally competent services for Hispanics Latinos in the greater Cincinnati area. And whereas, Apoyo Latino's focus is on social services, health, education, and immigration issues. They connect Latino-serving organizations to resources to improve physical and mental health, combat domestic violence, increase education, access legal services, and much more. And whereas, Apoyo Latino has served as a model for the creation of similar coalitions to better address the needs of the growing and diverse immigrant community in southwest Ohio. And whereas, during Hispanic Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich culture, history, and traditions of 20 Latin American countries and territories. Hamilton County is proud to be home to the growing Hispanic Latino community that has strengthened the rich culture of our region. And we encourage all county residents to learn more about Hispanic Latino culture by partaking in community events. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does hereby recognize the strength and significant contribution of the Apoyo Latino to the Hispanic Latino community and does hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2023 as Apoyo Latino Day in all of Hamilton County. So with your deference, Commissioner, I just wanna thank you all for coming in and being recognized. The beauty of what you have done is the coalition building amongst different organizations with the same kind of purpose, making sure that the touchpoints in this community are strong and we become a welcoming county for individuals from the Latino and Hispanic communities. So thank you so much for the work that you're doing.
We're, we're gonna open up also Commissioner Dumas.
Congratulations for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much for everything that you do and, uh, just really, really appreciate. I see so many faces that played a big role in my, in my life. Uh, especially of having been the first class of since I public schools to ever do, uh, where they teach you Spanish as a second language from elementary all the way through high school. I see one of my classmates, I don't know if she's still here, but she was here earlier. She's over there. My classmates from Withrow International Studies Academy. So thank you so much for everything. Yeah, speak.
Okay, well, I'm a little, well, a little, no, a little shy, but honored really to be here. Uh, we have been, for how many years? I don't know. Life, life goes on, but, um, it has been really, how can I say? We are giving our community the opportunity to have, um, to know where the resources are. That's one of our missions, uh, specifically for low-income Hispanic individuals. That's our mission. So we have great, um, a website that is bilingual and is bilingual because it's in English for providers and Spanish for all our population that cannot speak English. And then they are the ones that are at risk, uh, and they are the one that really need our help. So like you said, we are not really working for ourselves, but for the whole community to make sure they have access to different places. And thank you so much and really it's an honor and, uh...
And I'll just say that, um, this group started off really, really small. Lechha was one of the founding members. And it's amazing to see a grassroots organization be recognized today, um, in this fashion, which is great. But I also think it speaks to where the Latino population is in Hamilton County and how it has grown tremendously in the last... I mean, I moved here about 30 years ago. You never heard anybody speaking Spanish. And now everywhere you go, you'll hear Spanish in some way or another. So, um, it's nice to see a coalition grow to better be able to meet the needs of the Latino community in Cincinnati. So thank you for recognizing this small group.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep, we're gonna come around and take a picture. Okay, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, if you would come forward, Mr. V. Anthony Sims Howell. Whereas V. Anthony Tony Sims Howell grew up in the Republic of, Republic of Panama. When the Panamanian government was overthrown in 1968, Tony and his wife, Julieta, immigrated to the United States. And whereas, after arriving in Cincinnati, Tony became a commissioner for the Ohio Commission on Hispanic Latino Affairs, where he has served for over 25 years. And whereas Tony first heard about Santa Maria when he began serving on Ohio Commission on Hispanic Latino Affairs, both he and Julieta became involved in supporting the agency. Yeah, is that Julieta? Yeah. Well, we keep talking about you, so... Okay. And whereas Tony and Julieta quickly got to work attaining grants for Santa Maria, Tony began volunteering for Meals and Wheels program. And whereas Tony has had an amazing career and continues to serve on various boards and committees, he and his wife have received numerous awards throughout the nation. Tony was inducted into the Ohio Silver Rights Hall of Fame in 2011 and selected by the Cincinnati Bengals as a Cincinnati recipient of the NFL Hispanic Heritage Leadership Award in 2014. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners and the citizens of Hamilton County recognizes the many contributions of V. Anthony Sims Howell to the Hispanic Latin American community. Now be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does proclaim Friday, September 30th, as V. Anthony Sims Howell Day in all of Hamilton County. Congratulations. All right. Thank you.
Go ahead. Yes.
Just a few words. Um, I met, uh, Tony Anthony, uh, at OKI, I believe. Uh, I've seen you around all over the place. And, uh, OKI is a transportation entity that is very influential, very impactful on this whole region. And what I notice about Anthony when he's at the meetings, um, just so, um, articulate. And so, um, how can I say? You don't miss anything. And so when they show different videos of what they're doing about transportation, you are just really making sure that we're doing the best for people. And I thank you for that. I thank you for meeting you. And you've always been very supportive as a commissioner and I appreciate it.
Veritable.
Very welcome.
Thank you. I'm opening up Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. I was gonna say, a man with no need for any kind of introduction because we all know you. Uh, everybody in this room knows you and celebrates you and your wife. Uh, and so thank you so much for coming in and, um, I'm glad that Commissioner Dumas is bringing you in for the recognition. I too know you from OKI, but other things as well. I see you out and about everywhere. You are quite the ambassador for all things that you care about and we are a better community for it. So congratulations.
Just wanna say congratulations. Yes, you've been knowing me since I was a little girl. Way before an OKI. I didn't even know what OKI was. But, um, you have been so instrumental in so many people's lives. And, uh, you and my father, uh, served together on the, uh, board for Withrow and kept us in line. So we couldn't do anything because both our fathers were sitting right there at every meeting, every prom, every event. And, uh, we couldn't do anything. They were right there looking. And my dad wasn't there. You were, he was telling you and you were telling him. So, uh, I just wanna thank you for all that you have done in this community, both at, uh, the level as a parent, um, involved in the community, and always, uh, saying, "We've gotta do more." And then of course, OKI and at the state level, I was at the state house and there you were again. You're always right there. So I really appreciate everything. This is well deserved. And your daughter should come forward as well. We'll hear about this. There you are. Oh, you're videotaping. Okay, yeah, do your job. Do your job.
My son to stand up.
Oh, he's where? Okay.
My grandson to stand up.
Oh, yeah, where at? Oh, yes. So the floor is yours now.
Oh my God, you guys took a chance. This is not about me. This award I was getting today, I was hoping that Brooklyn was here today. She's my great granddaughter. She's in Cincinnati Public School. Straight A. She got a B and she cried. My family's here. They sacrificed me to y'all. What I've done in the community. I get to spend less time with them. My story I'm telling, I'm lucky to be married to Professora Julieta Maria. She's a good record keeper. And everything that I have and I possess, I had to prove. The only thing I couldn't bring out here today is the Muhammad Ali picture, which he took with my daughter in Brooklyn. Uh, when we met with Bill Howard and Chairliss, uh, Chairliss and some, uh, administrator. And he'd become the senior president in Brooklyn on my fight in Brooklyn. I tell you a story because it's important that I mention these people. You may hear the name Gottrick Crow. And Gottrick Crow, if you look in the, the Kentucky State Patrol, they honor him. He was a, uh, state commissioner when liquor was banned. And the government of the United States made him, made Gottrick Crow the judge in, in the canal zone. I grew up in, in a segregated canal zone. My wife did not. She's fortunate. She grew up in Panama City. And when I grew up there, to get into college, you have to have an IQ. You just don't say you wanna go to college. So if you look in the record book and Mr. Cornet, Mark Cornet, did a wonderful job when he wrote up that article about me. And I love him and the work that he has done. These are the people that bring me forth into all of him and everything, not me. My wife, record keeping, and the two ladies. And one of them is sitting up there and my daughter, S V. I say that because, and I'm going back first, I have to go back and forth because I challenged the judge when I was 15 and a half and it was published. And I challenged the judge. And the judge said to me, I wanna see. I said, "Why can't I go to a white college in the canal zone?" And he looked at me because I just walked up to court and challenged him. And he said, "Come into my office." And he put me to sit down. And he said, "You see all those books around you? That's the law." And he said, "Vestal, if you wanna change the law, you gotta change it. Not me. I interpret the law." I said, "I'm a kid. I can't change the law." And that stayed in my mind all the time. And I became a rebel and a fighter. I, I grew up, I ran away from home when I was a kid. When I graduated, my grandmother is my best friend. And I came to, in Panama, I went to Panama City and my friends became the leader of the country. And then they decided to overthrow the country when my wife was pregnant. And we had to leave because I was scared. My wife was pregnant. And we came to Brooklyn, New York. Met some wonderful people. And from there, we fight civil rights and stuff, but I'm always there. When, when the Krung Ice Incident, everything is published. Everything I say, she has the record. She's a good record keeper. And you can look it up. It's on Google. You can see it. The Krung Ice and the Jewish community was having a problem with the West Indians. And I was there with Bill Howard and Chairliss and some people. And we resolved it. And then there was the also representative Guy Schumer. Sent me a letter and said, "I want you to come to my home." And he was gonna thank me for it. And I have that letter. I showed it to John Michelle. I showed it to a few people. And then the letter you wanna see, that's my record keeper. So when we came to, after that happened in Brooklyn, she was working with a company, Chiquita, and she came over to Cincinnati. Oh my God, Cincinnati. So when I came to Cincinnati, the Meyer Levin High School, I have a history there with fighting for the programs. Many people, uh, Whoopin' Goldberg came there. And the program, uh, Mark and Mindy Starr was in that school. And that's why I've been a fighter. In that time, we didn't talk much about Latin. We talked about people fighting, West Indians, Spanish, whatever, Puerto Ricans. So when I came to Cincinnati with my wife, I thought I was okay. I just wanna transfer and don't get into this. Running to Alicia Reese and my daughter, Romana. And the first thing she said, "Pops, you gotta go to that PTA meeting because I was involved with the school." So when this lady was there saying, "Where is the principal?" And the lady was trying to tell her the principal is taking his courses, doctoral. And he, she said, "He never come to PTA meeting." I said, "What's wrong with her?" And the two of them turned that school upside down. And I knew Alicia from that time. And she's always running everything. When I deal with her, she run her father. Romana did a lot of stuff in the school that I had to go there. So I'm involved in school with Romana and I fight for her. I serve in all these PTAs. And I tell you, it was a journey between two of them. And I tell you someone, the organization that I formed, been involved with, the Spanish Chamber, I know it happened. Uh, James Arney and his wife, Mora. I gotta give these people credit, not me. Because of them, that's my fighting story. That's why I talk about them. Game on, Grace Ramos, and I came to Cincinnati. And Alicia and her father, that's why I got involved with the African-American Chamber. Alicia is crazy. And I move around with Alicia all over the place. And, uh, Michael Beck is here. He followed me everywhere. And we were in the park, we're on the stadium and she was, she was in the city council. And she said, "I want you to meet this Chinese delegation." And I met them and they put my name in Chinese. I said, "Who are these people?" And she said, "They wanna form a chamber." The rest is history. You can ask, uh, me and Michael went up to Field Zergel and we got that chamber together. And they say, "You're not Chinese. We only can honor you." And they honored us every other year. So this people are in my life. That's why I talk about them. This is important. Not about me. I was just a soldier. And then I came and I, and I met a great guy in true grace Ramos, Governor Vanovich. And I served on the Minority Development Commission for a number of years. And then Vanovich had the strange note to advisory board. They put me on this strange because when I don't agree on something, I say. I never ask them a favor. They can tell you. And Vanovich, I said, "I have a school in Price Hill, not over Price Hill. Robert's idea, they need computers." And that's why I brought that book. I have to have you there evidence because every student wrote a letter and Mr. Smith was the principal and wrote to the school and thanked them and for doing that. And every day, he sent the computer to the governor. I said, "Thank you." He put me in the Hispanic Commission and the rest is there. The rest is story. And I fight the legislators up there in Columbus. She was up in Columbus. She became a politician and she forgot about me.
No one can forget about you.
I do whatever. You see me on OKI board. I'm just one of the raisins in the sun and a few other raisins in the sun. And she comes in there with an attitude. "Where is the rest of the minorities?" And she had to learn that they're elected official. And I say to you now, the Hispanic Chamber, Alfonso is here today. That's one of my, and, and... That's one of my, and Lutus is not here. I don't know why. She's one of the funders. Oh, she, Mary Curtis should be here. And I don't see, Mary Cara is here from the sheriff's office. And these are people. Sometimes I give them hell, but I fight like hell for them. When I came twenty years ago to your commission, education was pretty bad with Latinos. And I brought the commissioners. I was a chair and I brought them. You weren't, it didn't look like you all, but I was there. And I brought those people from, they talked to us and I wanted to make a change. I went to the city council. And then, I met with Mr. Adam Muskie and the rest is history.
We got a lot of history. They're going to cut me off.
I'm going to cut you off.
They're going to cut me off in a minute. Okay. We want to take a photo with you and we got to get with the record keeper because you got a documentary.
Yeah. So, what I'm saying to you in closing, I want to say because if it wasn't for Alfonso and all these people that is fighting. And that is your report to you, their success story. The Latino group have given so many scholarships. And these kids went through the DACA program and they're all, most of them are MBA. And we have done great works. And I want you to remember them. That's all I'm saying.
Well, yeah.
About me. And I just don't want to, that's why I tell Bishop, that you don't want me to speak. But I say, it's not about me. It's about my family.
Yes.
And I hope you bring my grandson back in here. When he tell you, "I love baseball," and sixteen of the guys who played with him died.
Wow.
Talk about that to my son.
We want to have your family come up here with you. And Commissioner Dumas is going to present the proclamation. We're going to take a picture with you. And we know where to find the record keeper to get the real story.
But you're responsible for six hundred thousand people. And that's what you're doing. But remember the Latino community with all the restaurants.
Eight hundred thousand, Commissioner Dumas, is what it reminds us. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We're going to take a, we're going to take a two-minute break. So, if you people need to get out, a three-minute break. Give it three minutes. Three minutes. So, if everybody needs to leave out, you don't have to stay. We're going to take a three-minute break. We'll be right back. The mic is not, there it is. Okay, we are back. And really exciting. Have great and great folks that we honored. And you're free to stay if you, because we do have exciting meetings. But if you have to go, we understand it. You have to talk. Go ahead, stand out in the hallway if you have to chit chat. Yeah, Mrs. Tobert, if you want to chit chat, no problem. You can hug and dap up right outside the door. Okay? All right. All right. So, we're moving along with the meeting today. Now, we will open it up for public comments. Is there anyone on Zoom? No one for comments on Zoom. Okay, now, let's go to, I've got some cards here. All these for public comments? Got it. Okay, Nick Tobert, you have the floor for two minutes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It's been a while since I've been down here. Somebody miss me. The reason why I haven't been down here is because since the last time I've been down here, I've had four heart attacks and a stroke.
Sorry to hear that.
Also, I've had a blood clot that was on my heart that they told me it was going to take a year to get rid of. They said my heart fraction rate was less than twelve percent. The highest is fifty. They told me I had over ten diseases from hypertension, diabetes, COPD, Alzheimer's. I had all of them. Guess how many pills I'm taking right now? None. Know why? Because of that resolution that I fought to pass over a year ago to recognize indigenous people that were seen before. They didn't take pills every day. I'm in the gym curling a hundred-pound dumbbells. Every doctor from Sandy to Christ, all of them, they hate my guts. Because I did what they did. And that's the reason why we're going to have a celebration every year to do what they did. Because they had a celebration called honoring the dead. The dead. That's why when you go in every restaurant, like the Hispanic restaurant, the Latin restaurant, they have the skull. When you go into the lot of the Asian restaurants, they always recognize the dead. The celebration of the dead predate all three religions combined. And that's why this planet did so much better. And Halloween was connected to that. And the celebration of the dead was bigger than Christmas and New Year's put together. We can't forget about them. Because the religions told us once they're dead, you're dead. You either go to hell or heaven. It's not true. They didn't believe that. And all was connected to all three religions. And so, what I want to do is I'm going to be talking to the three guys at the Freedom Center. We're going to bring that religion, we're going to bring that celebration back. Because we need that blessing. We can see it in their restaurants today and even in the foods that they eat.
Thank you. Thank you. Glad you're doing much better. Eric Ruffin.
Hello there.
Hello. Welcome.
First thing, my name is Eric Ruffin and my wife and I own Able Building Systems. We've been in business twenty-four years. We're going into our twenty-fourth year. Today, we have probably eighteen employees around the city and the county working, making money above the prevailing wage. They have health benefits. They have retirement. They have life insurance. They have all the things that my wife and I have fought for, for them to get. The other thing I'm feeling is, I'm feeling some serious girl power. I got four daughters. And I am so proud to see you three women up here doing your thing. Because it's woman power. But congratulations. And I love seeing it. Need to see more of it.
Thank you.
So, my passion, I hope, doesn't appear that I am yelling or upset. But I see our businesses struggling. And I see us trying to work for the county. And the county, I was taught to never tell my customer no. I was taught to never tell someone to use someone else. But I have decided Hamilton County is not my customer. They are difficult to work with. They are convoluted. They sub out their contract. And I got to go to Periscope and they tell me I got to pay a hundred and seven dollars a month to see the bids. When I do a public records request, I get sent to somebody else. I don't get the record. I've talked to anybody that you're going to tell me to talk to on your staff, I've already talked to them. I already have the emails from years of just trying to bid your fire alarm work. I just want to monitor your fire alarm. I even offered your purchaser to do one for free. And he said, "No, we don't bid that because it doesn't cost enough money." So, over the last history of Hamilton County, you have with a credit card purchased your fire alarm monitoring from the same company without ever even offering someone else to maybe give it to you for free. I don't want your business, but I do want to be here and help for somebody else who was like my business twenty-four years ago that was being told you're looking for them and you're really not. It's a shame. We should be ashamed of ourselves for people who start business on their own back. And you make it difficult by making them think that there's an opportunity. You have outreaches. You hire somebody and then you don't give them no power. You don't give them no resources. You give them nothing for the people who have built this county who pay taxes. We should be ashamed of ourselves. And I'm here to help. I don't want your work, but I will help you to do this if you want me to. I bless you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for that feedback. I would, I know you see, talk to a lot of people. But Mr. Jeff Aludo. Okay. Well, we got to get you back with him because that's who's going to have to, he doesn't. Yeah. We got you. We got you. Okay. We got you. Okay, you'll get back with him and then let us know what transpired. Thank you for the feedback.
Sorry to take too long.
Thank you for the feedback. Really appreciate it. Okay, next is Greg Webb. Webb. That's why I said Webb. Sorry. Sorry. I don't, I do not have my glasses on today and I'm struggling. Where are my glasses?
Thank you. Again, my name is Greg Webb and I'm a native Cincinnatian. Proud to be from a long list of entrepreneurs. Some of you folks may know some of my relatives. Businesses like Old Southern Barbecues be on Fifteenth Street. Old Southern Restaurants be on Central Avenue. And Harmony Foods be on Corrane Avenue in the West End. And I'm here to say that I'm thankful for the commissioners, for the disparity study. And hopefully, it will be very appropriate for the National Hispanic and Latino Month. But we're very happy to see that the disparity study is taking grip here in the county. And we hope that the policies of inclusion and diverse companies will succeed better. As Eric was saying, that there's always have been difficulty dealing with the state. I mean, it's the county and the state and the city too. But anyway, the county right now. I've been in the construction business for forty-something years. I suppose to be, soon I retire. But now, my wife may be coming and still working for her other little company. We got Northside Supply. And so, I still see the struggles. The first day I worked with Mr. Bill Cargill, William Cargill. And till the day that I went to Turner and then went back to my own company, D H G Construction. I've always had trouble dealing with the county. And I have reviewed the disparity study. I hope there's follow-up on it. And I commend you guys for getting that done. And there's a lot of minorities out there that can use your help. There's a lot of money being spent in this county and the city. Cranes all over the place. Yet, we're still here with our hands out. So, I just want to say thank you for the study. Thank you for getting it out there. And hopefully, we can trace it and monitor how the study goes as time goes on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll make sure that he's on the list when we do have the presentation on the disparity study in terms of the work. Next, we have Stefan Pryor.
How y'all doing? I say how y'all doing? Y'all doing all right? Okay. I'm going to do something different today. Action. May Lord God Almighty expel every enemy that pretends to be your friend. May God Almighty uproot every plan and traps that's in front of you. May God Almighty cancel every evil plots that's against you, me, and my friends and family. Hope that prayer reach y'all. Let's talk about Mr. Ollie Trolley. I know y'all know him up there. Mr. Ollie Trolley, he served all y'all some good food in the past thirty-plus years. He need help on his property. We don't want the same Kenya bar that took place in nineteen forty-eight. That gentified twenty-six blacks, twenty-two sixty-six blacks, twenty-six thousand blacks families. They doing this whole Kenya bar all over again with the spaceship down there, the soccer stadium down there. Then it come a five-hundred-million arena. See, just arenas come in different places with tax, what they call the opportunity tax zone break. That's why these arenas come in different locations and different places, Bishop Hill. And we need to help the black community. I heard a brother said in the West End had a restaurant. We need more blacks down in the West End, not pushing people out of the community. You got businesses down there. You got property down there. And they need help. There's a lot of money being given out. Banks been sued for a lot of money to help a lot of people with their development with discriminatory practices and redlining. I know about all this stuff now. Keep coming down here, Charles. So, help the people of Cincinnati. Y'all come here all the time and get money and ask for things and they get it. You got lobbyists. They come down here and lobby y'all. I know the whole program now. Start helping the black communities, Ms. Denise Drew House. I know you do. Mr. Alicia Reese, President. Mr. Stephanie Dumas. And y'all are two clerks. I know y'all do y'all thing too. So, they need help in the West End area bad. Not picking the ones who y'all choosing to use in that community. Let the community be a part of the West End, especially a black man. Ollie Trolley had a business over thirty-plus years and still serving. And the opportunity is there. I know it is from the city, from the county. And it's taxes that for the one percent, it need to go on the ballot. That's what tax people need to see. Taxpayers need to see it on the ballot. If you're going to raise taxes one percent, put it on the ballot. They put everything else on the ballot. They put my mom and daddy on the ballot. So, put that on the ballot. One percent. It'll work. So, I thank y'all. I love myself and nothing y'all So, I thank y'all, I love myself, and nothing y'all can do about it, all right?
Thank you. Brian Riblet.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for the opportunity to address you today. I'm here today, my name is Brian Riblet, City Manager for the City of Montgomery. And I'm here today because we have an item on your agenda for consideration that will certainly help kickstart an exciting project that we have in Montgomery. On behalf of our City Council and myself, I just want to thank our commissioners for all you do. I know the work that's involved, and I thank you for all you do. And the tremendous partnership that we've had over time with Hamilton County Commissioners. Also want to thank Hamilton County Administrator Jeff Aludo and his team. They've been great to work with over the years, and we certainly appreciate all that they do. And also thank Hamilton County Engineer Eric Beck and his team. They've also been incredible to work with over the years, and we've got such a tremendous relationship with everybody in Hamilton County. We hope to keep that up, and if we can help you in any way, we want to do that as well. And I'll just close by saying, if this item is approved today, I'm in a position to sign a notice of commencement as early as next week, and work will begin the week of October ninth on this project. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. That was our last public comment. If the commissioners wouldn't mind, I know you're the City Manager of Montgomery, and we do have an item on it, item number two on this agenda, I believe it is. Is it item two? Maybe it's not two. Okay, item number two. Would you, you should be okay if we advance that item? Now, my only thing about Montgomery, I spend a lot of money in Montgomery. And I'm getting used to the roundabout, I'm just gonna say that. Yours is better than some of the places further out. The other ones, I keep going around in circles, because the people are behind me and I can't read the sign at nighttime. And I just keep going around until the next car behind me, get off my back, give me a minute. So, but I just want to say yours is better, because at least, you know, it's bigger. But I still have my concerns, so get a little more light around those roundabouts, so I can read the signs. Okay, item number two I'm gonna advance, Mr. Aludo.
Assistant Administrator Christmas is gonna walk us through the Community Revitalization Grant that we are recommending award to the City of Montgomery.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you. Yes, we're excited to bring this resolution forward. This is another one of our Community Revitalization Grants, where we partner with communities in Hamilton County to revitalize and improve all of our suburbs. So this grant agreement with the City of Montgomery is in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. This will support the Montgomery Corridor Project. And grant funds will be used to allow the city to complete the second stage infrastructure, so the private development can follow. We're recommending five hundred thousand dollars. I know the City of Montgomery is, I think the total project cost is two-point-five million. So a significant match amount from the city. And we recommend approval.
Thank you. I'll open it up, Vice President Dreehouse, any questions or comments?
I'm just happy to support this. This is layering on to investments that have been made from the private sector and the public sector to really reinvigorate that corridor in Montgomery. So, thank you for being here to speak to the issue and happy to support.
Awesome. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What's significant for me is a match from the City of Montgomery. Oftentimes, villages and cities come in and ask for money, but they don't want to provide a match, so I'm very appreciative of that.
Awesome. All right, well, I put a motion to approve item number two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll open it up for comments and motions from our Commissioners. Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you, I just have a couple of things today. One pertains to one of the speakers. I attended the African-American Chamber kickoff yesterday at Convention Center related to the Convention Center District Project. And so I'm, is Robert still in the back of the room? Yeah, you're back there. So, Robert was there yesterday, and so that event was meant to bring minority contractors together to make sure they're aware of the opportunities that exist related to the project, and get them in the queue, get them in a conversation with Three C D C and others to make sure that they get part of that work. And so Commissioner, or President Reese, if you wouldn't mind providing the contact information for the gentleman that spoke to Robert Bell, let's make sure that, I suppose he wasn't there yesterday, but make sure he's got the information he needs to participate in the project.
Which gentleman?
The gentleman that spoke.
About the county not doing anything?
About not having the ability to work with the county. So, there was just this forum yesterday that was co-sponsored by the city, the county, Three C D C, the African-American Chamber, to make sure that minority and women contractors understood what opportunities exist and get, you know, start the relationship. So I just want to make sure that Robert has the contact information for the gentleman that spoke.
Yeah, but I want to be clear, I think that gentleman is talking about doing business with the county, and what we have done. But Robert was in the room, and I think Bridget Dorchery got the information. But he wants to talk to the top people, because he said he has been running around. So I would like for Jeff to get us the report on that one.
Okay, well, it's all that-
I don't know if he wants to work on the Convention Center, I think he wants-
Well, he said he was a contractor.
Yeah, yeah. I just didn't want to miss, I mean, I don't want to down, water down what the man said. Twenty-four years or whatever, he's been trying to do business with Hamilton County. And we have fired, we've been doing with one company, he said, with a credit card. So I just didn't want to downplay what he said, because he's gone. But I think Bridget has this information, and he was in the room, Mr. Bell was in the room when he talked.
Yeah, I'm actually referring to the other gentleman, not the one that did the inspection of-
Oh, D A G.
Yeah, he's a, he does contracting, so he would, what's going on at the Convention Center District, I think, is right up his alley. So I just want to make sure we make the connection. And Robert's shaking his head, so I trust you'll do that, thank you, Robert. So, and the kickoff was pretty well attended. There was a lot of interest in the vendors, from all, you know, all things from wayfinding signs to construction workers. You know, there was just a wide variety of women-owned businesses and minority-owned businesses in the room. And so I thought it was a well-attended event, and I thank the African-American Chamber for helping put that together. And I understand there's one tonight also over at the Convention Center, organized by labor, so I might try to get over to that one as well. Another event, and Commissioner, I know you attended it as well, was the LAD Town Hall. So this is an organization that advocates for people with disabilities. They've been around for quite some time, and they have this really great town hall that is led by people with disabilities, who know the very best about what their needs are and can express themselves in a way to convey to us what the needs are in the community, what some of the challenges are. And they ask us very intuitive and thoughtful questions. And I was pleased to, as part of the county, participate in that and try to better understand where they're coming from and some of the issues. And we talk quite a bit about housing and our money that has been set aside through the ARPA dollars for people with disabilities. I know that RFP has gone out, I don't think we've seen anything conclusive yet in front of us in response to that. But I'm very excited that the three of us understand that there are special needs with people with disabilities, and we're creating housing to address those needs, and we convey that to them. And then also, Lenora Godfrey, we celebrated her being named the CEO and President of the Mental Health Recovery Services Board. There was this reception this morning, she is going to be fantastic. Pat Tribby had that position for many, many years, I think thirty years. So Lenora has big shoes to fill, but she's been with the organization, and she shared part of her vision with us this morning, and I'm really excited to work with her. And then lastly, I have to say that someone that's familiar to all three of us got nominated for the Forty Under Forty Award and got the recognition. His name is Alex Linzer. He's now the Deputy Director at the Board of Elections, but he used to be my Chief of Staff. And so I just wanted to publicly congratulate Alex for his Forty Under Forty Award. Thank you.
Congratulations, Alex. Commissioner Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a few things. I participated in the White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, their weekly call, as I always do. And there's another one coming up today. Also attended the World Cup game, and they won, actually won three to one. When I left, it was three to one, I don't think they made any other goals. But it was just a fabulous opportunity to see the positive energy in that place. And I'd like to, you know, more people to be involved, and nobody really knows a lot about soccer, and I don't really know a lot, but it was just something really good to go and something different to do. So I thank the organization for inviting me there. Job and Family Service Director Michael Patton, I met with him to just talk about a few things as it relates to the rental assistance and how we can improve people getting their rent covered quicker and where the gaps are. And so I was satisfied with what he's trying to do, and some of the creative things he's trying to do is still a challenge, as we have said, but we're all working very hard to make sure that people get their rent in a timely manner. And then I met with Holly this morning about the homeless grant allocation. I had a few questions about who received the allocation and what the criteria was. I'm satisfied with that. And another thing is, I read the newsletter from J F S, and they had an article in there, and it talked about daddies do hair too. And I thought it was just awesome that they had a project where fathers can come and learn how to better handle their young lady's hair going to school or whatever occasion. I was so excited about it. Calvin Williams is the Fatherhood Director. And I wrote Michael Patton about, well, can we do something for mothers, maybe, who don't know how to tie ties? I know you can't do it in the fatherhood program, but I just thought it would be a good thing to extend a program like that. Came up with an initiative, just a draft initiative, as I often do, and asked him and J F S to take a look at it. And it's a PLOT initiative, which stands for Preparing for Life's Opportunities Today. And what it will do is help young ladies to be ladies, and show them how to, some adequacy, how to perform, how to dress when they go through an interview, or even younger girls also. And also for young men, when we go into the tie issue, how to wear your tie, how to dress, how to speak when you go to different places. And that will certainly prepare them for the opportunities in the future and jobs or just getting along as it relates to relationships. So Mr. Patton said he would take a look at that, see if, in J F S, if they could look at that and see what they can do with that initiative. And, oh, just one other thing. Just like to draw your attention to Buy Leave One, which is an ARPA resolution that Holly and Jeff will be talking more about. We're trying to spend down that eight million that we have left over. I'm just really excited, ecstatic, I should say, about Inspire Initiative. It's finally going to be funded for the second round, and people, as I said, and I continue to say, are anxiously waiting for that five thousand dollars. So I thank my colleagues for putting that on the agenda for today. Hopefully, we can pass that and move it forward. And that will end my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Also, a couple of things here. I attended the Who's Who in Black Cincinnati kickoff event that was hosted by Tia Rochelle, who's the CEO of Johnny-on-the-Spot Concierge and Triversity Construction. And I had quite a few people there, looking forward to the main event that will be happening, I believe, by the end of the year. Also, met with Congressman Lanthman Office about V A Resource Event that we're planning and putting together with the Five One Three Relief Bus to help veterans. So should be getting that date hopefully soon, but right now, I know they've got a bigger issue dealing with trying to keep the government open. But hopefully, they'll be able to work that out, and we can move forward with that, helping the thousands of veterans that need help here in Hamilton County. Also, Vice President Dreehouse mentioned it, the LAD Disability Town Hall. And both of us were there, along with City Council members and representatives from Metro. One of the things that I was very excited about is, of course, their smart homes that they have. And one of the things we were putting our budget together, being that we put in the most money of any government entity ever in affordable housing, that we did say we have a amount that would be for new housing, and we have different components. One of them is for people with disabilities and seniors, and that's something I've been really pushing for. But I'd like to see something like a complex, if you will, that could be a model, a national model of having these, their smart homes. So I'm hoping that C D F is moving forward with LAD and trying to put something like that together, something that we could bring in the Secretary of Hood and others and be able to see. And who knows, bring more dollars here. Because our goal is to be number one and to be a leader as we are moving in this space of accessibility and affordability. So they were very excited about that when we talked about it at the meeting, their town hall. Also, I was with the Five One Three Relief Bus at the West End Seven Hills Neighborhood House this week, and was able to have our two, our Health Commissioner for the county and the city. It was the first time the city Health Commissioner had seen the Five One Three Relief Bus, and I'm excited about some potential partnerships. One of them being birth certificates that we'll be able to hopefully soon have as a service on the Five One Three Relief Bus. Hopefully, working out in partnership with our County Health Commissioner in Springdale, and doing something with the flu shots there. So we're very excited, their wheels were turning, and I want to thank both of them. We had a tremendous crowd, and the people that we're helping and seeing, the Department of Disabilities was on the bus, and they have nurses. And they were taking sugar, your glucose, and also doing blood pressure. There was a woman on there that came off with the glucose, they had to get her straight to the hospital. She had no idea, just walking around, saying, oh, I think I'll check it while I'm here. And she got it checked and had to get straight to the hospital. Because who knows what happened if she had not gotten it checked right then. So those are the kinds of things that are coming out of that bus and helping so many people. And then, of course, we've helped a lot more people that day as well. Also, met with Alter Fiber about the Black Music Walk of Fame, they are doing the free Wi-Fi. And we're trying to get a good handle, because we've got a lot of visitors. And based on their formula that they put together, they're estimating about twenty thousand people went through the Walk of Fame since the grand opening. So we're trying to work on getting some better measures for people who may not go on to our Wi-Fi, might use their own Wi-Fi, what have you. So, I thought, but I thought that was a good start and a good report, considering we're not even doing any real marketing, if you will. In addition to that, met with Victus, they are on board now, and will be meeting with all of the Commissioners, but I got a chance to meet with them regarding the youth amateur sports and that ninety-three-billion-dollar industry that we're missing out on. So they're doing a study, and will be meeting with partners throughout Hamilton County. Understand, Blue Ash, the City of Blue Ash has stepped up, said we want to meet with them, because we've got some ideas. I know the Mayor of Forest Park said he would like to meet, because there may be some opportunities there. So they'll be looking at all opportunities, but I'm happy to see that we're looking into that, and they're on board, and we'll be moving forward. In addition to that, I also met with the Health Collaborative, and also was able to give, we've had several that come through the Black Music Walk of Fame. We had a hundred and ninety young men with my brother's keeper. They met with Senator Sherrod Brown and the Reds, and then had a tour at the Walk of Fame. We also have had Pastor John Gray, who's been on Oprah and other things. He came, he's from Cincinnati, Withrow, and he took a tour as well yesterday of the Walk of Fame. In addition, also excited that we were able to get an award that will be aired in December on National B E T, where we were able to be featured at the Gospel Superfest National Show of the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And everybody was excited hearing about what we've been able to do here. So excited that we'll be on that. We also, I said, was, I don't know if I said it last time, we were featured on CBS NFL as well. So we are getting some national attention with the Walk of Fame. So we're very excited about that. And possibly, hopefully, Chuck D is in town today to speak with Ohio Justice of Policy Center. And hopefully, we'll be able to stop by the Black Music Walk of Fame while he is also in town. Lastly, I would like to say that we had a robust meeting- Lastly, I would like to say that we had a robust meeting on Tuesday as we are looking at the Convention Center District. And some of the issues that I had raised during that meeting, wanted to say that right now, people are, every homeowner has received probably a letter dealing with the reevaluation of your home property. And I want to reiterate that that is not a mandate by Hamilton County, is not a mandate by Hamilton County Commission, and not a mandate by the Hamilton County Auditor. It is a state law. And to get it changed, we'd have to get it changed at the state law level. In the meantime, it is estimated that those evaluations will be the highest that we have seen in decades. That may translate into higher tax bill in January, possibly. With that being said, as we're looking at all of the things that we have to make decisions on, the things that we kind of control, everything I look at, I'm looking at it from that particular backdrop and trying to find the best deal, squeezing the best deal possible that we do on any deal. And making sure that if we're giving abatements and breaks on this side, that it does, somebody's got to pay, that it doesn't trickle down to raising the rates on the homeowners because somebody's got to pay the bills. With that, these are some projects that I wanted to keep in front of us because this list keeps growing, that we will have to look at whether it's with money directly, whether it's with a government tax break, whether it's with a letter of support. It's always somehow includes us putting in something, meaning the public government. And so we've got a Pay Corps Stadium that has to be dealt with. Right now, it's at 500 million, but we're still waiting for the final report. So that means it's going to go up 500 million if you stay as is. But if you do anything else, there's going to be, there's going to be a number behind that. We own the stadiums, meaning the county, we're responsible for them. And yes, we do have one little pot that we put to the side, but it doesn't mean that that's going to be it. And we know that the taxpayers don't like the deal we got. They voted for one thing, but then when you get behind the curtain, they got a contract and a lease that the taxpayers are on the hook for 96%. And they got, they voted and somebody wasn't around after that. So that told me they don't want that deal. They want, I know I want to diversify the tax model. That means I got to look at all what's available. I can't give everything away because I got to hold some back, but what would be available to do something different for that deal? Next, we've got Millennium Hotels, we gave it a lower number, 50, these are estimations, 50 million to tear it down and demolition and own it, but give it to the Port Authority and that's about $55 million in debt. We haven't come up with anything to say we're going to get that money right back. Next, we've got the Convention Center, and I say expansion, but we find out it's really not that much of expansion. We're only talking 12,000 square feet and it's outdoor space. That means December, you can't book nothing. January, February, you can't do nothing with it. It's put us up, put an ice skating rink out there and we don't make no money off of that. And that's $200 million, so I'm trying to figure out what is the best use and how do we do that? Then the Headquarters Hotel, which is my focus. The reason we got here because we said we tearing down a Headquarters Hotel. And I'm disappointed that even in the presentation, to this day, we don't have a solid funding model for the hotel and we're looking at spending up all the money in the Convention Facilities Authority, but nothing for the hotel. And when I say 800 rooms, I had found nothing in writing promising the people the 800 rooms. So I don't want to be like we were at the stadium. We promised you 30%, then we got here, well, we can't do it, it ain't in writing. I want now the taxpayers to get something in writing. If we can give them a, an agreement in writing, because they're not doing anything without us getting them a contract. So why can't the public get a contract? 800 rooms, Headquarters Hotel, get it notarized so we don't have no wiggle room when it comes to the taxpayers. And then, of course, the safety complex, which we're going to address now, but I want to be clear, the county, we stepped up. We done put over $20 million to try to get this completed. And thank God for ARPA. And then, of course, the Wex Garage, a garage that is going to service a hotel that we do not have a funding plan for. And we don't even have a guarantee of rooms, but we guaranteed 3CDC. They said they needed a guarantee, the bank needed a guarantee. Now, they didn't go with a promise, they didn't go with a handshake, they wouldn't take our word for it, they wanted the cash. $1.9 million, just sitting to guarantee a garage that we don't get $1 for, nor do we have an agreement on what kind of hotel we going to get. Is it 800 rooms? Why would you start with a garage and you ain't got the hotel? But we did. And then you've got Fort Washington Way that they're asking us to sign and hope we get a grant, but you still got to put a 20% match. That's still some money, to have some green space and soccer fields on top of Fort Washington Way and we don't make any money. And then they say that we need an arena, $500 million. And they're looking at the arena and one of the spots is the Millennium. So why we had a, we have arena and we got a Convention Center, which one is it? So I wanted to keep these and the list keeps growing because everybody somehow feels like we run down here, somehow we got a bunch of money to give you and it's easier to get it from us than it is to go down to the bank. Because when you go to the bank, you got some questions, you got to sign some paperwork, you got to give them some guarantees. They can't go down there and say, I'm working hard. They don't, they don't take hard work at the bank. They want that. You could take that down, but that's when I'm looking at these deals, that's what I'm looking at. And I wanted people to know, we will be voting possibly next week on a 1% increase for hotel motel tax. And I just wanted to make sure we looked at all options before we do that. And one of the things I saw with the Titans, who was one of our competitors and a competitive market, by the way, Tennessee, Tennessee utilized their, they got it, they got it passed at their state legislature to allow them to do 1%. It says the bill would give the Metro Nashville City Council the ability to raise a hotel multi-tax by 1%. A 1% increase could generate an additional $10 million per year to pay the debt on a new enclosed Tennessee Titans Stadium. So, and they've got a diversified model that takes the risk off the backs of the taxpayers. They got the NFL, they've got the state of Tennessee, and they also have other tax, but now this 1% added tax. Now, I'm not saying we have to do this, but I just want to make sure we don't use up all our money and all our tools and we're back to a model where 96% of the cost for the stadium is on the backs of the taxpayers and we're not looking creatively. So that's why I brought that up to be looked at. They said their stadium will be able to host Super Bowls, NCAA Final Fours, and other major events. So I wanted to, to highlight that and those are the things I looked for. I also have concerns, we always have 15%. Every time we do something, let's try to get 15%. They've been doing that 30 years ago when we first did the expansion Convention Center. That's nothing new. We're going to have a meet and greet, meet the generals and the generals meet the subs, let's meet and hope we can get 15%. But we are building things that will be up for 20-plus years. So we want to move now to a partnership and an equity model. And it did disturb me saying that the location that's selected that we don't control, it said that there can be no equity. And so I'm trying to tie into ownership of the land, ownership of the land. And we still can do the 15%, but ownership of the land is where I'm focused on in partnerships. There is no African-American owned buildings, but we're using a lot of government tools and we collect money from diverse people. So I wanted to highlight, those are the concerns that I had and I hope, and I asked Mr. Ludo, he had put a, a document together and he said it's a living document, but I want to, and I asked for it to be on the website. So I hope that this is on the website. And in your comments, Mr. Ludo, you could tell us, is it on the website and when will it be on the website? Because I don't want this information just to be for us, I want it to be for everybody. They can go there and find out what's going on. I did ask some questions about who's paying for the canceled events. And I think it was the city and then I got word that, wait a minute, that wasn't said, I don't know, but I would like clarification on canceled events. Who is paying for it? I think you said it was $130,000, but that seemed a little low because I know there's some of the Home and Garden Shows, they spend way more money than $130,000. When you go to Convention Center, it is not cheap to bring in the carpet and bring in all the flowers, bring in all the people. The car show ain't cheap, bringing all the cars and all that. I don't know how that's only $130,000 of lost revenue, but I want to make sure that that number is correct and I want to be, that's why I want all this stuff notarized in writing. I want it notarized so we don't have, you don't have to worry about, I misunderstood or it was not said that, get this stuff, we got two notaries here, get it notarized so that we know that that is happening. So wanted to, to highlight that this was not in my comments, but the gentleman that came before us, I mean, that blew me away. 24 years, can't get in, locked out of the system, can't get in touch with nobody, that's what we've been saying. Can't do business. And I know this board has been bold in trying to break that up, but this is real life stuff that's going on out here. So I would like for that to, that to be addressed. And then the fact that these group homes have continuously not been paid on time, being paid behind time. On one side, you want the group homes, you must do this, 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 and this, but then on the other side, it's time to get paid and we not doing those. I know, I want to thank Mr. Ludo, we resolved it twice, but I do want you to comment on how we're moving forward. So this, these are small businesses so that it never happens again. Thank you, Commissioner Dumas, for also bringing up about the people getting the money for their rental and home mortgage. Very important because people are losing their homes, not getting the payments on time. So we do want to get a report on that. So that's what I have for it. Mr. Ludo, you could address those items of the website when it's going to be up. You can address the gentleman who just came and what we're doing to try to change those type of things as well in your comments. So I'll turn it over to you.
Commissioners, just very quickly, the frequently asked questions document, I believe, was on the website as of Tuesday. So as of, I think right after the meeting, I think that went up on the website. So that is, that is there in terms of, you had mentioned the JFS payments.
On the website, is that our HamiltonCounty.gov?
On our, on our Hamilton County.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of the JFS payments, I will follow up again with Director Patton. Commissioner, you and I had a discussion. I know that Director Patton is looking into that as we discussed at one of our last meetings. You know, we said that that type of payment irregularity for anyone is, is not tolerable. So we have to change that, we have to fix it. So I know Director Patton is looking into that. He did go ahead, as, as the board is aware, and make sure that the payments for the vendor who was having issues were forwarded, meet as quickly as possible. But there is still a broader systemic issue there that we're taking a look at. So I don't have an answer for it right now, but as soon as I do, I'll report back to the board or, excuse me, or Director Patton will. In terms of the gentleman from a little bit earlier, I'll have to follow up. I, I remember, I think he, I believe he said something about fire alarm monitoring. So I, I do recall the discussion with facilities on some fire alarm monitoring bids or quotes in, over the past couple of years, but I don't remember the gentleman directly, so I'll just have to follow up and look at the records. I know, I believe Ms. Doherty convened with him in the lobby, I think took some emails from him, et cetera. So once I look back into that, I'll get back to the board on it.
Thank you.
In terms of buy leaves for today, commissioners, just two things, one quick comment and then a, and then one buy leave item. Just a kudos, just as the board knows, we have staff across this county that are just experts in what they do. So just very quickly, I want to throw out a quick shout out and a congratulations to Mary Krupenbaker over at Department of Environmental Services. She's the Assistant Manager for, for the Solid Waste District over there. And the Ohio Solid Waste Association of North America has named her the Young Professional of the Year for the state of Ohio. So I just want to congratulate Mary and the entire Solid Waste District and all they do, but in particular, Mary, for that, for that well-deserved award.
Yes, congratulations.
And then, secondly, just into a, a buy leave resolution, commissioners, on Tuesday, a Tuesday staff meeting, we had a discussion about the ARPA reallocation. We also had a discussion at a staff meeting about a month ago on it, so this was the second staff meeting. The board had talked about a reallocation. I know we've been, there's been some work with staff in terms of trying to come up with something that works. There's a resolution before you today that real allocates that 8.8 million into several different categories. That includes $250,000 to expand the Inspire Program, 5.4 million for the Hamilton County Regional Safety Complex Project, 2.1 million for Court Technology, 700,000 to assist with ERAP conclusion, 150,000 for emergency housing, and 200,000 for disaster preparedness. So I'd open it up to the board for any comments. For a specific detail, I would ask if Assistant Administrator Christman wants to add anything additional in, but I submit that resolution with the administration's recommendation. Commissioners, we're happy to take any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you, Assistant Director. Did you want to add to this or? Okay, great. I'll open it up. Vice President Dree House.
Thank you. Thank you also to Holly and Jeff for working with us. At our last meeting, we talked about our highest priority, well, I'll speak for myself, my highest priority is the safety complex. And so that is in here at the full amount, so grateful for that. The court technology's in here and the disaster relief from EMA is in here. But we also noted that there were some residual dollars that had not been designated to anything in particular. And so Commissioner Dumas had talked about the Inspire Program, so 250s. And for that, Commissioner Rishu had talked about the emergency rental program and that backstop money that's in there. And so that was increased by 151,000. And then the emergency housing that I mentioned is in for 150,000. So I think staff was very responsive to what we said at the last meeting and I'm grateful that the math works here and, and that I, as Holly has said, we'll revisit this probably in a few months because this is going to continue to happen. But I think this is a, a good way to spend what's in front of us right now. So thank you for your work on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think we divided it up pretty well as everybody's priorities for us. We still have some. I'm very happy about how we allocated this. I was just asking Leslie, and I thought that resolutions had to have a number, but they don't have to have a number, do they? No? My mic wasn't on. Did you guys hear me?
Yeah, but the TV didn't hear you, so you had to replay.
I was just saying that the allocation of the ARPA, why do I do that all the time? But anyway, the allocation of the ARPA money I thought was significant. It impacted lots of programs that we were concerned about. And as I say again, we all have our priorities, but our whole board is supportive of everything that's on here. I'm just, I'll say again, just really happy about the Inspire Initiative and we can move forward. And so, thank you so much, I appreciate it. And of course, this, the safety complex, we're all just really excited about meeting that gap that we had so we can move forward and have a groundbreaking and all that good stuff. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Of course, I, I concur with my colleagues and all the things that are in here. And congratulations to Commissioner Dumas on Inspire. And I want to say that that adds to the $3.9 million that we've given out already because I, I think it says a lot that this commission understands that youth, investing in our youth. I think we all have taken that bold step to invest in the youth in every way possible to make sure that the positive programs have resources so we can get to our young people. have, uh, resources so we can get to our young people in a positive way before the negative, uh, elements of the streets get to our young people. And they are dealing with a lot, with gun violence and all kind of negative things that come to them on a regular basis. So I'm just excited that, uh, this is in there, um, as another tool, another money, more money to help. And I think we've tried to look under everything we can find to find any, every dime that we can toward youth. And I think that that's an important message for today. Second thing is, today is historic. We passed this. There's been so much talk about the gun range that impacted, is owned by the city, but it impacted Lincoln Heights, Woodlawn, uh, and Evendale. And those gunshot rings that so many generations of babies had to endure before we got to this point is, uh, I just can't imagine. But this board say, said that it stops here. And we finally, we never could find the money. We didn't have the money. We couldn't locate the money. Um, but now the money is there. We're closing the gap. And this board is stepping up big, over $20 million. And then finding a location and all the meetings and all the town halls and all the, I've been, this is my third position, and we could never find any money. And now we finally did it. So I don't want to just, um, man, I want to stand up and shout right now. Um, and now that we got the money, we just got to, I want to move on a most accelerated pace possible, because now the money is out of the way. So, um, I just want to thank, uh, my colleagues. I want to commend them for all of their hard work on this. Our partners, we got a lot of partners. Uh, we appreciate the partners at, uh, Senator Brown and City of Cincinnati and all the partners. Uh, but even with that, you need, you need, somebody got to put the money up. At the end, we all had the will to do it, but we didn't have the money. And we had to make a choice, and we chose wisely, I believe. So, um, I just, this is, I know it's just a resolution and we put in here and put in there. This is historic. We got the money. We closed the gap. The debate is over. We can finally get to moving, and I can't wait to the ministry here. I need the date. We need the date. We ready for the date. I don't care if we turning dirt, whatever. We got to be out there on this soil, because this is huge. So I just wanted to, to say that. Uh, Commissioner Dumas, you have your light on?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, I know when I first came in '19, I was like a parrot, if you go back and look at the tapes. And every week I was saying, Lincoln Heights Gun Range. Lincoln Heights, I'm gonna keep saying it until we do something about it. And so, uh, we, as I said, we changed it from Lincoln Heights to what we changed it to and what it is now and what it should be as far as the name. But I thank my Chief of Staff, who, uh, you know, you have the money, but you have to have workers. And I know, uh, my Chief of Staff, when he first started, I said, "This is your first priority, your first assignment is to get this gun range closed." And I know there were other workers, as you say, but I want to thank my Chief of Staff, Bishop Hilton, for leading the charge, uh, for my office as it relates to this gun range.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas. I mean, Commissioner, Vice President Drehouse, I know you got something to say too.
Well, just to pile on, um, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm glad that this is, the money is finally in place. The work has begun, as we all know. And so nothing has been held up because we didn't have the funding. But to have the funding in place now is a big milestone. Um, and it's grateful for the other partners, as you mentioned, the state, the feds, the city, ourselves, all in to help with the financial stack here. Um, but many, you know, Woodlawn, Lincoln Heights, Evendale, City of Cincinnati, Colrain Township, have all been at the table with us trying to make sure that this project gets done. And so I know it's been, um, a challenge for 70 years, as we've been told many times. Uh, and so I'm glad that, uh, we are finally putting this in place and finishing out the financial part of it.
Yes. Hamilton County Regional Safety Complex. I like that sound. Mr. Ludo, we need a date. I want to go, we need to be out there. 70 years.
We refuse to say no.
Yes, all three of us, yes. That's what Mr. Dumas said. We refuse to say no. We said, uh-uh. So we need a date. We want to get a date. I want to put on everybody's calendar, 70 years. Want to go out there, even though they say work has begun. I got to see it. We got to go out there together. All right, I'll make a motion to approve by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Thank you. That is it.
Put that in the paper, in the headline.
I know. Where's the big headline? It's done. All right, okay. Um, okay, Mr. Ludo, we want a date. I wanted to put that, put that on your, your iPad. We got to get it quicker than Odell Owens naming of the building. I want some, we got to get out there.
As, as soon as we have a date for groundbreaking, as we've talked about, we've got some, uh, federal requirements we have to take care of that we have absolutely no control of, over. But once we have a, a date for turning the first spoonful of dirt, we will, we will have the board out there, absolutely.
First time I would say, I want to throw some dirt around. Start getting in the gym. 70 years, woo, long time, Vice, Vice President Drehouse and Commissioner Dumas. Okay, um, now let me get myself back together. I got so excited.
Engineer, I believe.
Oh, we on to, I'm sorry, Mr. Engineer. I got so excited, Mr. Engineer. Do you have anything to do out there, Engineer? Go on out there. You got to be a part of it too. Let's get it done, Mr. Engineer.
We do have a facility on that site.
Yes.
Can I, can I just say that the engineer has been a fantastic partner in all this? Because he has to move off of part of this property to make it happen. So, uh, the engineer has been very good to work with. Thank you for your help with this, Eric.
Thank you. Clear your schedule too.
Got it.
Okay, all right. All right, Mr. Engineer, what we got?
Just, just one item today. Uh, item number one is a resolution for the 2022 Sidewalk Repair Program. Uh, this will permit us to, uh, sending any outstanding sidewalk repair bills, uh, forwarded to the county auditor for collection on the, the property taxes. These, this project was completed last year, so this was the, the work, sidewalk work that was done last year. Approximately 75% of the property owners have already paid. Um, the 25% remaining are shown on the table that is in your packet. The, I believe, the highest residential one was just under $500, and that's appropriated over five years to the auditor. Um, so the highest annual one was $87 to the property owner. And there's only, it looks like 12 total property owners that did not pay. So this will allow us to take it to the auditor and get that put on the tax bills.
Okay. Open it up. Any questions?
No questions.
I put my mic on. Any questions, Vice President?
No questions.
Any questions, Commissioner?
No questions.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Ludo, we have our consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, just, we have a fairly short consent agenda, uh, today. Uh, just walked through these very briefly. Item three is a budget adjustment. These are for, to appropriate some grants and, uh, transfers within, uh, a couple of departments. Uh, grant for DNA analysis within the coroner's office. Uh, there is some, uh, cabling and, and data wiring upgrades in the clerk of courts office and consulting services in domestic relations for, uh, review of divorce backlog cases. Uh, item number four is a then and now between the prosecutor's office and KMK Law Firm. Uh, item number five is, that's, I'm sorry, for 13,000, if I didn't say. Um, item number five, uh, for $48,993 is a purchase of a Chevrolet Silverado 3500 for the county engineer. Uh, resol- uh, item number six for $107,000 is a resolution number, uh, P120-23. This is a purchase order for juvenile court for computer hardware upgrades. Uh, item number seven is a credit card authorization for the Human Resources Department. Item number eight is, uh, for the job and family. The next three items are job and family services. Uh, $450,000, uh, with Nella's Place for group home services. Uh, item number nine, $400,000 with NECO, uh, for independent living services. And then we have the, uh, contract with, uh, the Mental Health Recovery and Services Board, uh, for program and financial oversight for the county's managed behavioral health care services. 3.125 billion. Uh, finally, we have, uh, the report of no objection for four liquor permits. And we have, uh, uh, item number 12 is travel, um, authorization for travel at the county's expense. The engineer with two employees to Columbus, Ohio, the engineer with six employees to Columbus, Ohio, uh, the engineer, uh, with eight employees all the way to Mason, Ohio, uh, the coroner with one employee to San Jose, California, and the coroner with two employees to Denver, Colorado. And that completes the consent agenda, Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh, open it up. Vice President Drehouse?
No questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
No questions.
I make a motion to approves items three through, to approve and accept items three through 12.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Anything else? Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.